The meeting of the chairman of Pittsburgh Board of Commissioners for our regular meeting Monday, August 8, 2016. We will open the meeting with a moment of silence. Jay Farrell, will you lead us in the pledge?
Sir, everyone, rise for the pledge. Pledge of the ladies. To the light of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, and never be in doubt of the Lord. Thank you.
Do you have your agenda before you, or are there any motions to either postpone off of the consent agenda or modify the agenda in any way?
I think the agenda we are discussing is the corrected August 8, 2016, 11:55 a.m. agenda.
That's correct. That agenda adds one more matter to the consent agenda, which is the setting of a public hearing, and it also adds a closed session to discuss the purchase of real estate.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Michael Fiocco, seconded by Jay Farrell. Those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. The motion carries unanimously. So we have four items on the consent agenda: minutes, fiscal matters, and then the setting of the public hearing for 1, 3, 4, 5 Thompson Street. Is there a motion regarding the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Angela Baldwin, seconded by Michael Fiocco. Those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carries unanimously. The next matter is citizen matters. We have signed up Randy Bowler to speak on dog parks.
Good evening, Mayor Ford. I just came in this evening after we euthanized our dog. A lot of you knew Karma today, and the entire time that Coco and Karma enjoyed lovely Pittsburgh, and the time I was in that seat, we didn't have a dog park. And so it occurred to me that while we're thinking about these issues with the additional elements and planning and so forth over your next fiscal year, that perhaps we could look into the concept of getting a dog park in Pittsburgh. Don't know where it would be, nor where the proper place, but I think it's something that you'd find a lot of citizens would support. Where my mother lives in Valparaiso, Indiana, they have dog parks and parks of remembrance where people also plant trees for family members, et cetera, which I think would be a valuable thing for Pittsburgh. As a side note, Jay, while I was getting flowers today and receiving flowers from Gin Blossom for our anniversary and our dog, I ran into Julie over there, and she has a great golf cart. So, you know, she's using it for business, so I know that that was an issue this board voted on last summer, so I see one business owner using it, and she tells me she uses it all the time, so I just thought I'd report that.
By the way, Randy, I do have one also.
Well, I'm waiting to see you on it, Jay.
Thank you very much, and Randy, we will be thinking of you and Leslie. Oftentimes, my chocolate lab gets mistaken for Karma. We have two people signed up who I am not certain whether these people, Deborah Fessel and Mike Watkins, I'm not sure if you all are seeking to speak on the issue of the Milot rezoning. Yes?
Yes.
The board generally has policy, which is that since we've had a public hearing, that we generally don't allow remarks on matters that are on the agenda. Does the board feel that that is something we want to continue, or would you like to hear from Deborah Fessel and Mike Watkins?
Just before you go on, I'm not trying to speak on the Milot.
You're not speaking on the Milot?
Well, not in that specific section.
Well, given that we have a public hearing where it is truly only the information we should consider, I don't know that it's appropriate to hear.
The board seems to be in agreement, so Deborah Fessel, thank you for your interest, but I believe we will not hear from you. Mike Watkins, did you want to speak on something other than the Milot rezoning?
Yeah. One question I would have the four individual Wesels for. Were you aware of the public hearing?
I just couldn't be here.
Okay.
Mike Watkins, yes?
Mike Watkins, 400 Prince Creek. I have two observations. The first concerns comprehensive land use plan. The second, donor holes. In a recent rezoning request, the applicant used the argument, it is necessary to rezone this property in order to comply with comprehensive land use plan.
Mr. Watkins, that's getting just a bit over into
I'm sorry.
the matter of the Milot matter.
I'm simply an example. Given Chatham Park was a key player in altering the land use plan, QED, it is necessary to comply with Chatham Park's plans. Several people present here today, myself included, are owners of a residence property that has a different zoning of the land use plan. Our actual land use is, both in fact and in ordinance, as it currently stands, RA2. The land use plan would have us in high-density mixed-use, should we be required to rezone. Now, anyone selling their 10-acre lot in an erstwhile RA2 subdivision could sell it to 40 different people, or turn into 40 lots and sell it to a single developer, regardless of what their neighbors may have to say about it. Which brings me to donor holes. I keep hearing it's important not to have donor holes. Important to whom? The recent rezoning request is a donor hole. Close it, and Chatham Park gets what they want, but then it creates another donor hole immediately to the north of it, this time a residential subdivision, not all of whom are anxious to sell out for progress. It's not hard for CBI to close that hole, just make it really uncomfortable for the locals, and it's theirs. But move further south on the bypass to the U-Bank load area, several donor holes there, including my own Prince Creek subdivision. Don't you know it's necessary to close some of these holes so we can complete the comprehensive transportation plan? But who actually designed the transportation plan in the first place? Well, Chatham Park did. This game goes on and on. And where does it end? Where I see it right now, it's in the obliteration of any properties in the eastern ETJ that are not entirely owned by Chatham Park. One, actually a third point, if you'll forgive me. I was very grateful for you guys bringing up the idea of a citizen advisory committee on Chatham Park, and I was pleased to see the notice, the letter to the editor in the Chatham Record. That said, I took the liberty, since I didn't see any other advertisements or publication of the news to the public general, I took the liberty of posting it to the chat list to see if anybody would be interested in applying to that. Just as a thought, it may be something you guys might be interested in using as a way to promote things you want to hear out to the public. Not everybody reads the Chatham Record, and very few people actually go to the Pittsburgh town website to get updates and things like that, so my comments are just like.
Thank you, sir. Patrick Bradshaw, would you like to have equal time, or would you like to take that through the agenda?
I'd be happy to respond to any concerns when we get to the agenda.
Thank you, sir. The next matter on the agenda is mayor updates. Ordinarily, I rattle off a whole list of things that I've done over the last period of time since our last meeting, but Brian Gruzbek, Heather Meacham, Michael Fiocco, and myself attended a very interesting meeting on smart water metering and smart utilities at SAS last Friday, and learned a great deal about -- the town of Cary has implemented this system, and it's just amazing to hear from them about their savings and their economy as a result of moving to that. But we have a number of other things. My Triangle J Council of Governments meeting was canceled, but we'll be meeting in Sanford next time at the Buggy Company, so in September. Has anybody else been to meetings that they would like to discuss? Climate change, or Main Street?
No, I haven't. Main Street did meet, but I did not stay long, because I was celebrating the anniversary as well. So the PBA has not met since our last meeting.
Tomorrow--
I can just mention that the Main Street team, I think, has finished their bylaws for trying to get a 501(c)(3) designation, so they'll be moving forward.
And tomorrow night, we have a meeting of the joint boards at Horton, is that correct? Yes, now--
EDC.
EDC.
And Chatham County Commission.
Yep.
It is tomorrow.
There's not a warning.
Okay.
I maybe just sent that out as an apology to you guys if you're interested.
Under old business, then, we have a rezoning request from RA2 to RA10. Jeff Jones, would you like to introduce this matter to us?
Yeah. I'll flick it through for me. This is the conclusion of rezoning request, REZ 2016-05, for the Russet Run area. Public hearing was held on July 25, and the plan board met last week on Monday, August 1 for their recommendation, and their recommendation was to deny, or three to vote. Part of their reasoning for the denial vote of the three who voted against was to emphasize the health, safety, and welfare portion of the rezoning request that was in the resolution or the ordinance to approve, and the three that voted against it thought that the town was not situated to serve this rezoning for a potential of 700-plus new units that might potentially be there. Some of the other folks who voted for the -- voted in opposition of the motion, but the two thought that the rezoning was in keeping with the land use plan. In fact, all the plan board members voted for the statement of rezoning, that it was in keeping with the land use plan, but however, they felt like that sewer issue was something that they wanted to emphasize on their recommendation. So we'll scroll through. This is the area, again, it's designated as medium-density residential. RA10 is here, goes from medium-density to high-density residential. That's the definition of RA10. Staff is recommending approval of the rezoning with the caveat that once future subdivisions or development plans are submitted to the town, that we would have to do further analysis of that plan to ensure that it meets the current future land use plan for that area. One of the things I wanted to show to you was our overall land use plan, that might be interesting. We've had five or six rezonings before you all in the last year that I've been here, and it's interesting to see where we -- where the plan promotes medium-density residential, low-density residential, mixed-use, traditional neighborhoods, and commercial. In this area, you can see that it's adjacent to mixed-use designation and commercial designation, along with medium-density designation, where towards your -- the western side of town, southern, a little bit of the eastern side near the lake, we have lower-density residential neighborhoods, the lower-density residential that the plan would promote. Also, on this plan, you can see at the very eastern portion of the Russet Run area, which is -- this dotted line that runs north-south is the future connector road between 64 and 5501. It is my belief that that dotted line, along with our transportation plan, shows a future road at the eastern portion of this 190 acres. Engineering, all that environmental work has not been completed, so the exact alignment is not set in stone, but that's one of the things that we've wanted to point out, is that there are -- there is plans for some transportation improvements when development occurs in this area. Current zoning map, of course, has it as RA2, which is mostly the green area, and then the brown area that surrounds the parcels in question, is Chatham Park PDD, with the subdivision to the north being that RA2.
Jeff, is that indicating a stream?
It's probably some sort of environmental feature that shows up. Whether it's a -- what type of stream it is is going to have to be determined once development occurs.
Yeah.
So I'll give you that brief synopsis of what's happened, and I do believe the applicant's here, if you have any questions for him, but there could be, of course, you would do the consistency statement, and then on the screen, we could pull up the motion to approve or a denial motion, that's in your packet as well. But I do believe the applicant is here, if you'd like to hear from him as well.
Before we go to that--
Yes, ma'am.
-- Mr. Jones, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Regarding the planning board.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, you indicated that they recommended to deny.
That's right.
So basically, their concerns were with, you say, health, safety, and welfare?
Yes.
Okay, and you indicated something about sewer issues.
Yes, that the town currently would not have the capacity in our current system to handle a subdivision that would produce potentially upwards of 700 units.
Okay, but we're talking about rezoning at this point.
That's correct.
Is that not right?
That is correct.
Because there are no area plans or anything that we're looking at, no development--
No development plan, and as if one were to come in, let's say, the rezoning for, by chance, to pass tonight, and the applicant or applicants, whomever it is, a developer came in to request a subdivision that would create 700 lots or so, or create enough lots to create 700 people living in this area. Staff would evaluate that based on what we currently do for water and sewer, and we would have to make a recommendation that currently, we do not have enough capacity to serve something like that, if it was a full build-out. But we don't know that yet. We don't know when that development's going to occur. We're talking about a rezoning and matching up to our land use plan. That's why I recommended approval, with the caveat that we would have to study these subdivision plans further whenever they come in for compliance to all of our town policies and ordinances.
But basically, just to be clear, if there were a request, and we have no allocation for sewer, you cannot go forward with--
That's correct. That's correct.
Other questions from Mr. Jones from the board?
Is it not possible that they would find other means to deal with their sewer?
Other means that don't include the town providing--
Septic fields or independently-owned system?
Septic fields would have to be on lot size properly to have a septic on there, and I think that 10,000 square foot lots would probably not be sized properly to hold a septic field. You're probably looking more at a half acre or more.
And just 4,000?
How much?
40,000.
40,000, so we're looking at almost close to an acre before you can cite a septic system in Chatham County. And then any type of private system, we would also need to evaluate that, too, is whatever that might be, I don't know, a package plant or some other system, but the town would need to evaluate that to make sure that it complies with current policies, state policies, and all that.
Jeff, do you have an idea of, let's say it is 700 homes, how much sewer capacity that is?
I think it's run a little calculation here. I mean, we're upwards of 250 or so.
1,000?
Yeah. It's quite substantial.
And what do we estimate we have capacity to?
Between 75 and 100 today.
Okay. So this is well in excess of what we had?
That's correct. That's correct.
So the thing that concerns me is if we had currently our unified development ordinance resolved, completed, passed as ordinance, and if we had the knowledge of the context of the small area plans that Chatham Park is preparing, will give us some time about the three sides surrounding this 190 acres, we would have the context within which, to my satisfaction, decide whether or not who's in the best interest of the public's health, safety, and welfare. I don't believe, given the magnitude of this rezoning, that we can be confident of that. I understand that there are further steps in the process and approval for subdivision review, and you've included a copy of that, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate your diligence that you've shown so far with other projects. But where it stands right now, lacking the sewer capacity, lacking an understanding, a clear, explicit public understanding of what's to happen on those three sides, I don't think we can say what is the highest and best use for this land, this 190 acres. And I also don't think we can be confident that changing the zoning from low-density residential agricultural to fairly high, medium-density is in the best interest of the community at this stage. I just really, really wish that we had the greater context, the greater knowledge of small area plans surrounding this land, and the confidence that we have a unified development ordinance that would govern development in this land. We don't have that. What we do have is current zoning ordinances and a hot project of other things that would presumably govern those 190 acres. But I can't support the rezoning, and I have to accept the input from our planning board that we need time on this. And I'll close by saying, I don't want to reject this, I don't want to deny this rezoning. That's not my desire, that's not my intention. I would much prefer that we table it for a date certain. I don't know what that date certain would be. I would greatly prefer that we have our UDO completed, at very least, before we give this serious consideration. But I just don't think that we, as a board, have the information we need to properly evaluate the highest and best use of this rezoning request.
Greg Land, did you want to speak to the deliberations before your planning board? Was there something you wanted to say regarding that?
I can go through a sequence of events, maybe. I have a couple of sentences written here, but the gist of it was, you know, we take what we have and not what we imagine we have, not what we -- we just take material that exists before us. So in the beginning, of course, we do two things. We find whether it's consistent with the land use plan. After that, then we make a recommendation. So based on those two things, that's the beginning point. So the first thing we did was, well, we found that it was consistent with the land use plan, there was no argument, no discussion, no concern about that, it's just fairly obvious. Also, so during the discussion, then, about whether to rezone, the -- with sort of a sideways motion over to sewer issues, and I think the position here is, we don't know about any of that, and we don't deal with any of that sort of stuff until we get something that says we're going to need two or four something or other, and of course, we just don't know that that doesn't exist. So I do not think that's the appropriate issue for us to decide, only is this in the right place, and does it do the right thing under the right circumstances? For instance, you know, this is an option for what we call, I don't like this affordable housing word, because I'm not sure what that really means, but how much money you have to make to have a house in this world, you know, I mean, first of all, you have to have a job. Some people don't have jobs, and so I don't know how to deal with that. But the certain way is to have some high density. That's the only way we -- a house in five acres is, those days are gone for so-called affordable housing, though this is one of the sub considerations of a rezoning like this. But the sewer issue wasn't there. I'm concerned that the 3-2 vote happened based on an issue that did not exist. We aren't in a position to talk about sewer, because we're not talking about any buildings or any particular use, only saying is this space -- our concern was to find whether this space was in the right place to do this sort of thing, and it was, by definition, that is, that was the finding. And then whether to rezone, the decision was made based on something that I think was not an issue at that point. And those are the things that concern me, and that's it. I'd be glad to talk some more, but that's enough.
Are you a voting member of the planning board?
Chair of the planning board, yes.
And you vote?
Who's talking to me?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I wasn't. I'm a non-voting mayor. I didn't know if you were a non-voting chairman--
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. This sound comes from all over, and I'm an old male now, and I don't hear well. Yes, the -- I chair the planning board, and I do vote, yes.
Oh, thank you. More to have any questions from Greg Land? Patrick Bradshaw?
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't really come planning to make a presentation, which I did at the public hearing, and again, to the planning board, but I would just comment on a few points that have come up. First of all, as has been pointed out, this rezoning request is not a request for allocation of wastewater or for any other kinds of utilities. It is not a request for approval of a permanent transportation plan. The high likelihood is that if this property is ever developed, it's going to be developed in cooperation and coordination with the improvements to the town's infrastructure, utilities, and transportation infrastructure. That will be made in conjunction with the development of the Chatham Park PDD. What this is, is a unique opportunity in a town as old as this one to have attractive land as large as this, that is in an area that your land use plan designates for medium-density residential, that you can actually rezone to make it consistent with the land use plan. Your land use plan only sets aside 18% of your planning area for medium-density residential. You've got 54% of the area that you have jurisdiction over that's designated for either rural zoning or low-density residential zoning. So if you're going to pursue and try to achieve the goals of the land use plan, to have a mix of housing types, a mix of housing price points in your town, you're going to, you need to take advantage of these opportunities to zone this property consistently with your land use plan. Rezoning this property is not going to take it out of the jurisdiction of your UDO. You know, I'm not sure exactly when you anticipate passing the UDO, but when you do, it will apply to this property. Rezoning is not going to change that. You know, there's been a good bit of concern about the use of the existing Russet Run. Again, as Mr. Jones has pointed out, the transportation plan calls for the long-term development of this north-south connector that is roughly adjacent with the eastern boundary of this property. There will certainly be streets that are constructed in Chatham Park that I expect will provide connectivity to this property. Subdivision lots under your existing ordinances are required to front on public streets unless they're in putts. You can have putts with private streets, but that requires a special use permit. So if someone came in to try to develop this property as a putt relying on Russet Run, first of all, no reasonable developer would even propose to develop this property relying on Russet Run as the access, as a private road, and it would be before this board as a special use permit request, and you would have control over whether you thought that was a reasonably adequate transportation plan for the property or not. Mr. Lott and Mr. Christman have owned this property for 50 years. They're asking you to rezon it in a way that's consistent with your land use plan. They are now surrounded on three sides by the Chatham Park PDD. It's not fair to them, and it's not good public policy to leave this property zoned as it currently is for agricultural and low-density residential development. So if you all have questions, I'll be happy to try to respond.
Are there questions for Patrick Bradshaw?
I don't really have any questions also for Patrick, but I have spoke to several regarding this issue, and I'm along with Pam Baldwin that, you know, this is a rezoning. There is no sewer allocation or anything, and I feel like that's what we need. Our concern is this rezoning. And that's the issue at the table right now.
Further questions or comments, or are we ready for a motion?
Question for Mr. Jones. So I confess that I know little about zoning, zoning law, development law. But I'm on a learning curve. I'm trying. And so I keep hearing this phrase bandied about rights by use. Can you help me understand how that applies in the context of changing a zoning area of 190 acres from very low-density, mixed-use basically residential or agricultural, to medium-density R10?
Yeah. So I think that what the applicant, Mr. Bradshaw, pointed out during the public hearing, was in fact that going from an RA2 to an R10, the land was actually giving up some opportunities to have some commercial opportunities there and/or agricultural opportunities that do not afford them, that you can't do in R10. So those rights by the zoning, they're actually being given up if you go to R10. R10 is generally going to be a single-family residential with some limited institutional churches and schools and things like that. Whereas RA2 is agricultural, some agricultural business types of uses. But zoning it to R10 or R15 or any type of zoning gives no one the right to fully develop a subdivision of size. There will be rights to develop R10 lots under a minor subdivision. In town Pittsburgh, minor subdivisions of five lots or less, so you could create four 10,000 square foot lots, and the remainder being the leftover, that fifth lot there. So there would be some rights to that under a minor subdivision that wouldn't come before this board. But anything over that, over five lots, would come before this board as a major subdivision. Anything that adds new public right-of-way, adds new public extensions of utilities, that's a major subdivision, and that would come before this board. One of the things that I've been thinking about under the current zoning of RA2 and 190 acres is that one could create around 76 lots without this ever coming before this board under an exempt subdivision rule of 10-plus acres, and then cutting those 10-plus acre tracts four times and creating two-and-a-half acre lots. There would be no town provisions to require streets, utilities. They could do 76 lots potentially off of Russet Run and just snake that easement all through this 190 acres, without the town being able to say anything. That's our right today. And that would perpetuate that Russet Run easement for many years to come. So those are some of the things that you have to consider of what's our right today.
But that's not been done. Nobody's talked about it being done, so it's probably not commercially viable, I'm going to guess. I don't see a lot of that happening in the county.
I don't. I wouldn't know. Nobody's talked to me about that. I'm just telling you what is by right today.
Sure. Well, I understand you favor the rezoning. That's clear, and your analysis is clear, yeah. But...
The land use plan favors it. Staff conform, not me personally.
Okay, all right. I hear that. I still think that what this board must grapple with is this bigger question. In the absence of an understanding of what happens on three sides of 190 acres, and I really want to emphasize this, folks, because I try to look for comparables, and we really don't have any. You know, Chatham Forest was suggested, Powell Place was suggested, Potterstone Village was suggested. Potterstone Village is 95 acres. Powell Place is 150, but that includes an awful lot of non-residential. Chatham Forest is 110. Talking about 190 acres. It's a very large decision we're making. And not knowing the very detailed plans that I'm sure Chatham Park has made on three sides of this property, I just don't see how we can decide that it's in the public good. I just, how is it we won't know, for example, when the small area plans are revealed, if Chatham Park isn't able to succeed in buying this land, how is it we won't know that there's a need for something else in this property, commercial, for example? I just don't know. And I just think that there's, we've got too much going on of really complex importance, major importance, the unified development ordinance, the sewer force main, and hopefully the small area plans that will give us the context we need to really evaluate the highest and best use for these 190 acres. I'm repeating myself. So, thank you for hearing me.
Questions, questions at the board?
I haven't spoken yet, but I will. I believe staff's analysis is accurate, that this property would fulfill the vision of the land use plan. I agree with the applicant that it's a unique opportunity to take a very large chunk of land and accomplish that goal. Regarding the development of the land, I know a little bit about this, and I do know that there are many, many hurdles to come prior to development of this property. There is sewer allocation that is a long time coming. There is construction of water, sewer, and roadways, a lot of expense and a lot of infrastructure. And in order to do that, it's going to require, if they're going to have water and sewer provided by the town, annexation into the town. There will be that request. There will be the subdivision process, and it will not yield the 800 lots that are being claimed. It won't happen. There is public right-of-way to be designated. There is stormwater management to be dealt with. There are streams, there are weapons, there are steep slopes, there are lots of things that are going to bite away at the density. So it will not be that 800 lot subdivision at a R10 zone. So the fact that it fulfills the vision of the land use plan, I don't find that there is a risk of the public health, safety, and welfare in granting a rezoning that adheres to the vision of the land use plan because there is not an allocation for sewer at this time, because development will not occur until it is available. When I think about some of the land uses that will no longer be allowed by right, there are golf courses that are presently available today but will not be in R10. There are athletic fields. There are hunting grounds. There are stables for horseback riding, hospitals. There are kennels for pet grooming, commercial. There is landing strips, public water and wastewater treatment facilities. Those will no longer be allowed on this property, whereas today they are. I would much rather have a residential neighborhood than public water and wastewater system. Telephone exchange, radio, and TV towers are permitted and will no longer be permitted. So I note to the folks who are out there in that residential area that this is a big change, and I can feel for you and understand that. But I do support this rezoning for the reasons I've just stated. You know, we have a land use plan, and I think it would be exceptional circumstances under which I would not support a land use that is in agreement. And I don't find that this meets that standard.
Thank you. Any further questions? Is there a motion?
Let's go to the consistency statement first, and then we'll go to a motion.
Add to the consistency statement.
I make a motion that this rezoning is consistent with, well, adheres to the consistency statement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Michael Fioco, seconded by John Bonnet. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Is there a further motion to deny or accept the rezoning?
I make a motion to approve amending the zoning ordinance in the town of Pittsburgh in accordance with REZ 2016-05.
Second? Second. Motion made by Michael Fioco, seconded by Pamela Baldwin. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
Thank you. Motion carries three to one. Thank you. Jeff Jones, we're, it's you again, on Chatham Park additional elements.
I think maybe one of the speakers may have taken some of my notes. So, Patrick, could you grab some paper? Ray, did he grab some paperwork? Sorry about that, a little technical. So, all right. So not a lot of presentation from me tonight. I think you've received a lot of information over the last several weeks about the review of the additional elements. Staff has prepared a schedule of when we're ready to go forward, presentations by the applicant. There was some discussion at the last meeting before those presentations were to begin, that the board wanted to appoint a committee to help with the review of the additional elements. And what we discussed at the last meeting is that this board would make some headway into coming up with the charge for that board and come up with some way to figure out how many people were going to be on that board and such. Town attorney did draft a resolution for you all to consider. I think that's a good start. There could be some amendments to that that you all would need to discuss. Myself and anybody else, Brian or Paul, can assist if there's questions, but I really leave it up to you all to think about the size of the committee. Who should be on this committee? Is it strictly town and ETJ residents, or is it of the greater Pittsburgh-Chatham County area? Who would facilitate the committee, and what are the directives of the board to this committee? Does it an advisory role before Chatham Park reviews any additional elements? Must this committee give a recommendation before you all would consider the additional elements? How long do you anticipate the work of this committee to be? And then maybe thinking of some communication protocols that you would set for this committee, of how the structure of communication would flow to you all from the committee through the planning director and the town manager and so forth. This is all just sort of suggestion. You can go any way you would like. You know, we can help you if you have any questions. If you don't have all the answers tonight, that's okay. Just, because there's a lot to think about here. But you all, as a board, probably need to start discussing things like size of the committee, who would be represented on this committee. And if you take those two items, then maybe some of the other things would fall into place. But I'll leave it to you all to discuss. And any questions, again, we can help answer.
And I might add that Alice Lloyd has very nicely gathered for us all of the resumes or letters of interest of those people who would seek to serve on the committee.
Right. I think we were about 13 people so far.
But she's not been able to address the issue of
Who?
Who and when will this committee meet, and how long will it meet? So I think for a variety of reasons, we need to narrow that focus so that Alice will be able to give better guidance to those people who are interested in those committee members themselves. Thank you. One of the things that I've been toying with and that the suggestion is some of you all, was the idea that it would be lovely if this board could come together in a consensus about who and how many and all of that. It's always very easy to disagree, and it's, but as long as I've been with you all, it's been, it has struck me that this is a group of people who have a great deal to agree about. And I don't know how we can work that in with our assignment here about the matters that need to be resolved, but I would hope that we wouldn't just throw out individual sets of names and that we can agree on the committee as a whole by consensus or by agreement across the board. That's what I'm thinking. That's my commitment.
Well, just as you were saying, Mayor, is that basically this advisory committee should function just like any other advisory committee? So basically, what we do, we look at all of the resumes and we review the information that, you know, all that they would be able to contribute to us, and basically then, as a board, we make that determination. So it will be the same, just as any other advisory board will be, in my opinion.
And we've set an arbitrary deadline for the 15th of August for the resumes or letters of interest to come in. And I think this is something that we need to work on between the meetings so that we can have an authoritative beginning point at the next meeting on August 22nd. Is that too ambitious?
Well, I was so encouraged by the draft that Mr. Messick put forward that I anticipate that members of the public will be similarly encouraged by the definition, you know, by the clarity of what we are expecting from this committee. And so I, my hunch is that we're going to get more applicants than the 13 who have submitted so far, especially if it's clear in a published resolution what the expected, what the expectations are, what the rules are. So for that reason, I might even suggest we extend it an additional week, but I agree with you that we're going to need to do some homework outside of meetings. Mayor Perry, and I very much appreciate your comments and support your comments, that I would hope we could find a way to come to consensus rather than boil down individual seat names to a voting process. I think that there's, in my experience, there's a deeper quality that comes with a group of people like us ourselves, diverse backgrounds, diverse perspectives, putting our heads together to really seek that agreement, that consensus, that this person may balance that person, or that both professional and non-professional perspectives may be useful. And then that body, that advisory body, may function even better than if we had decided by lots, for example. But then I was trained in meeting facilitation, that kind of crunchy feeling stuff, so touchy feeling, you know.
I guess one question I have along that is if we go to, say, a 10 or 12 member panel, if we have some members that have a specialty in just say the first four elements, but then really don't have a specialty in affordable housing and public facilities, would it be essential for them to come off and get replaced with somebody, or just come off? Because, you know, if it's really not your specialty, are they doing us any good? Now, we, I guess, spending their time, they are, they're definitely, you know, we want their help, but they really need the professional input.
Well, I think they would be one of many voices.
Yeah.
I think that's the idea. I mean, we've got a planning board, we've got a professional staff. You know, this advisory committee could be one of the voices. We will be hiring consultants with expertise in certain areas. So I don't think somebody disqualified that has taken off because they don't know everything about every element. But I do agree with John's statement about multiple voices and balancing of perspectives. So I'm comfortable that not everyone on this committee is going to be an expert in every element.
Right.
It's impossible.
Right, exactly.
And if that were to happen, then there would be one big argument for another.
And even if people don't have a specific expertise, they, there are going to be people who in the community are admired for their intellect and their way of measuring things. And I think they could be, even if they don't have a direct expertise, I think, I'm thinking about the fellow that if I were to make an appointment, I would want on the committee, he's not anybody that has a specific expertise except in a communications kind of methodology. And I think he's the kind of person that knows group process well enough to pull things together. So I think that's, I think that's going to be important as well as expertise.
And a lot of common sense is what, common sense is always very important. But, you know, even if someone is not on the committee, we always want you to submit information regarding. So, but basically, that's really important to me. And then you have a variety of knowledge. A lot of people, they're knowledgeable in a lot of different things. So basically, this would be that, different people, different ideas. And all the time, one person or two people can't think of everything, or five people. So basically, it's always good to have a variety, in my opinion, in reference to facilitating the committee. I guess that would have to be Mr. Jones and Ms. Cruzbeck.
Would it have to be? I'm trying to remember the name of the facilitator who led us through our retreat, our board retreat.
Mr. Long.
Mr. Long.
I do recall he's retired.
He is. And he expressed a fondness for working for us because we're such a special place, too.
Well, he did, and I suspect that was limited to doing the board retreat.
Maybe it is, but I'm thinking of someone with that kind of capacity, that we know our staff are stretched out, and we know our manager has got quite a lot on his plate. And I'm wondering if we might entertain the idea of a professional facilitator to help this body.
I feel as though it does need
Yeah.
the professional expertise. And I think Jeff is qualified and, yeah, I would, I would, we're having to.
And Mr. Long can certainly, if he's available, could certainly be here if possible to assist the situation.
I can't decide whether I would need a beer or something.
I think Mr. Messick's draft resolution is excellent and does answer some of the questions.
Mm-hmm.
That's good, because I didn't know the questions before I answered them.
I mean, I think nobody needs to have an expectation that this committee is going to sit plant the voting of the board or, and I think that the Board of County Commissioners has expressed an interest in having a representative on this board. That's been communicated to me from Diana Hales, who feels very strongly that some of these issues are the same issue they're grappling with at the county level, and that having a good flow of communication between the two boards would be very important.
Mm-hmm. County Commissioner?
Yeah.
Absolutely. Well, and that brings to mind a point that I made by email, that I think that we might shortchange ourselves by limiting the potential membership just to folks who are within the town limits or the ETJ. Someone who I've had in the back of my mind with expertise about public sector finance happens to live in Farrington, but by virtue of his possession of a U.S. Postal Service address saying Pittsburgh, and his significant investments in some in-town businesses, he is repeatedly and continually expressing concerns to me about the health and growth of this town. And I think he's the kind of person that I really, I'd hate it if we ruled out expertise just because they weren't in the ETJ or the town limits.
Well, I wouldn't necessarily rule it out, but I don't know that I want them on this committee, because I think I do want it to be limited to in-town and ETJ folks on this committee. That's my opinion.
What's?
Well, because I think, yeah, because this master plan is within our jurisdiction and is representative of the development of the town and ETJ. And so as representatives of those folks, I think we should keep an eye to, keep in sure that representation is within that limit. I think if the gentleman you refer to has expertise, I would love to hear it. Really. I don't know that they have to be on the committee to do that.
And these meetings would be open to the public, so ostensibly, those people who were outside the ETJ that felt they had things to contribute perhaps could do so through independent communications either with us or with Jeff Jones as the communication point person on the board. Is that possible?
Oh, of course.
Well, I think we need to come up with a number so that we can work the resolution. Do I see red, I think you're red pen marks on
Yes.
on the resume, of course. Do you want further discussion on the individual items?
Well, what I had thought was a possibility was that 12 members would be on the board, and that each commissioner would appoint two. That goes against the idea that we would take the pool and select from that pool. But that was the basis for my 12.
Or could we not still do the 12s, but do, do a review of both our independent thoughts and the people who have made the application at that point in time? And the importance of having it diverse and covering a variety of expertises and that good common sense would be up to us perhaps as we, as we pull those resumes together? Is it possible to still do a cooperative effort as we pull those resumes together?
We could do that. We could do as, as Amy mentioned.
But either one would be acceptable to me if each commissioner would appoint two. That would be fine, or it could be either. Either way would be fine with me. I'm not in private.
What about our consultants? I mean, at what time are we going to bring them on to the committee, Mr. Jones?
Yeah, once those consultants are identified and we're contracted with them, then they would be brought in, especially if we were, if the discussion at that particular committee meeting was going to be on affordable housing or public facilities or what have you, other consultants. And it could be that the committee hears from these community organizations that I've already started gathering information from outside of the consultant. And if there's consultants that need to be had for landscaping or signage, it's just one more voice, one more opinion that we would have from other organizations at the table as well.
Well, for example, there is a resume that's been given to us from someone who has an incredible depth of knowledge about affordable housing, just because that is one of the areas that we've pinpointed for additional consultants.
Right.
Does that preclude?
No, I wouldn't, I would, I would want someone like that, if you all saw fit, to have on the board, because just because you have one perspective from your consultant, it's good to have many different perspectives and be able to get to a point where we're comfortable making recommendations.
So does 12 meet the, meet the thoughts of the board?
So is 12, the outside number, does that also include representation from the county commissioners, from county government? I think 12 still.
One of the things that people have more to disagree against would be to do too large a committee, because people have a tendency to drop off, feeling that they're not either able to be listened to or it's just not a manageable size. I think 12 sounds good, but would there be an opportunity for a liaison to come in off of the Board of Commissioners that would be the 13th person that, I don't know that that person's going to have a vote per se. They're going to be there to remind us that there is an ongoing program at the county level, or that there's a consideration that needs to be made.
We certainly would invite folks at the county level who might have expertise on a committee that the county has, they could be able to speak to this newly formed committee. I can already tell you that the Health Department and myself, we've been reviewing the additional elements together. They've been giving me feedback based off of health standards and things like, so we're already doing some of that work together. It's just, do they have a seat at the table, or are they just active participants who we call in to get, to gain information from? And it may be that, instead of having a committee member, you all may see fit to have someone come in and give presentations or information to this committee. Again, they're always open to the public, anybody can attend. And I go to that round, but either way.
Further thoughts or questions? It's been suggested that we fill in paragraph number four with the letter number 12.
I think we need an odd number. Not that there would be voting, I don't expect that, but my recollection from the literature is that social science tells us that groups do start to fail over 15 members. And I'm not going to lobby for 15 members, but I think 13 is probably a good number. I don't want us to cut ourselves short with just 12.
Would the committee, would the board be agreeable to a committee of two appointed by each, reached in consultation with one another, and a 13th member representing the Board of Commissioners, county? Make that person out of the non-voting?
Madam Mayor, Perry, at 11, the draft resolution allows you to appoint one of your own members as an ex officio. If you all are not going to be ex officio members, why would you want the county to have a voting membership? But you can, of course.
Yeah, this, in my original conception, and I probably should have printed something out and shared it, I've been trying to pull it up. I had just sketched out, honestly, I hadn't put a single name on the page. I was thinking about backgrounds, expertise, perspectives, and that's how I came up with actually 17. And recognizing that there's concern about such a large number, I did include, I think I actually included two members from, no, one staff and one town commissioner, and then I assumed that there would be at least one from county. So.
See if I could find that document.
As a general rule, your town staff should not be on As a general rule, your town staff should not be on an advisory committee. You're going to get their advice regardless. And if Mr. Jones is going to be there, I mean, as the staff to facilitate this body, I don't think it's a purpose for him to be able to vote on it or be asked to vote on it. He may have a completely independent opinion about what's going on.
Yeah, I was, I was just.
Totally makes sense.
Thinking that you would scavenge the committee, that you wouldn't be a member of the committee.
And similarly for you all, as, I mean, you're going to have to make the ultimate decision, so why would you want to be a voting member of a committee that's only going to give advice to you as the board? That seems somewhat inconsistent with your role as the decision maker. You can certainly be an ex officio and be aware of and listen to or attend, but why would you want to participate when you have to make the ultimate decision?
Were we making that suggestion?
Yeah, I'm not necessarily participating, I'm thinking more observing. So, what we call that ex officio?
Yes.
That's how I got to my 17 number. Let me look back at my documents. So, so I'm, I'm thinking at least one adjacent property owner, at least two ETJ residents, at least two town residents, one downtown business representative, one person knowledgeable of local economic development, one person knowledgeable of sustainable transportation, including bicycling and pedestrian transportation, one person knowledgeable of recreation and parks, two persons knowledgeable of environmental and conservation issues, one person knowledgeable of affordable housing, one person knowledgeable of arts and culture, one parent or citizen knowledgeable of public education, one person knowledgeable of equity and justice, social justice issues, and then a good number of ex officio members. County Commissioner, I think it'd be helpful to have a school board member. I think it'd be helpful to have planning board members at least witnessing the deliberations. Town board member, members, someone from EDC, and ideally someone from the county planning board. So, I'm thinking rather broadly. But, you know, my, my, the lesson that I learned from last autumn's political campaign is that there's a real hunger and concern that we get very rigorous and thorough public input. And so that's our motivation, that's our shared motivation with even having this conversation. And so whatever the outcome we choose as a body, I'll be happy with that.
Further thoughts?
I'd like to take some additional time with Mr. Mason's resolution and John's suggested revisions to it. Is that not fully processed for this evening?
Okay. Is that a motion? Well, um.
Motion to table the resolution for further work?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think we need to adopt it this evening.
Are you making that motion?
I like that motion.
Motion made by Michael Fiocco to place this matter on the table until the follow-up, next meeting on the 22nd of August. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jay Farrell. Is there further discussion on the motion to table? Those who favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carries and it's tabled until the 22nd.
Thank you.
UDO schedule.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and members of the board. I wanted to give you an update on where we are with the UDO and give you some, some target dates that the consultant and staff feel like we should strive for because right now, outside of random submittals that we've gotten from the consultant, there really is no defined schedule moving forward or even an attempt to define a schedule for the UDO process. And I think one of the things that will be helpful to the consultant, staff, and everyone involved in the review of the UDO is to set some target dates on when comments would be due, when public meetings might be held, when meetings before the advisory committee might be held, planning board, and so forth and so on. Because right now, things languish because there isn't a defined schedule. And I want to present to you all tonight with a, a schedule that Roger, with Claire and myself feel like is, is reasonable. We understand things come up and might not fully make it to the December 12th adoption date that we, that we proposed here, but over the next three to four months that we have remaining, we have laid out the schedule that we would have at least a couple of advisory committee meetings, public information meetings, meetings with you all and the planning board at joint meetings that we would hold on third Mondays of the month, leading us all up into a public hearing in October, the 24th, and then a planning board recommendation in December. October being the, the public hearing with some post-public hearing work that would need to be done by staff and the consultant to make any corrections or, or so with suggestions that we might hear at the public hearing on that. And again, we would have this before the planning board to have some discussion with them at least a couple of times before their recommendation. And then we would be asking the town board to adopt the UDO at their only meeting in December on the 12th with a, an extended target date for, for the UDO to become effective in April of 2017. That time between the adoption and the effective date gives staff and the consultant time to publish the document and get zoning maps and correct it that would reflect our new zoning districts that we are proposing to, to create with the UDO. This may, may change, but to me and all the folks who ask me, what's going on with the UDO, this would be a good guide for you all to, to say, well, I think we're in the September timeframe, there should be a public hearing, or public meeting coming up. Maybe you should call Jeff or so, or I, or hopefully, moving forward, I will give you regular updates as, yes, these things have, have occurred and we can tick them off of the, of the timeline. And everybody would just be more aware of what's happening with the UDO. Any comments or questions from the board? I can answer those, but again, I just want to sort of lay this out and, and start this, this week with this timeline discussion and then aggressively start next week with a UDO discussion at our joint meeting and then a possible technical advisory committee sometime the latter part of the month. Any comments or?
Well, see, I can appreciate the sentiment of trying to keep things moving, things willed language, so. I do find the schedule ambitious, but willing to dissipate. But one thing that struck me as I thought about this, is I don't even think we have all the draft pieces yet.
We don't. There's, there's a section of the second module, the natural conservation ordinance that is in draft, and that would be culprit number one that would delay the review of the UDO because that's something that we've been needing because it's a new thing for the town. As I understand it, it's supposed to be coming.
Any idea when?
It was supposed to be last week. I will follow up. One of the things that I, I've started this two weeks ago is having weekly updates with the consultant. Because I would go a couple of weeks and I wouldn't hear anything and I just wanted to kind of get a little better rain on that. So I will have a meeting this week with Roger and we'll find out where we are with that. Yeah, it's aggressive, but if you don't have something on paper, we could be here in December reviewing Module Two and, and we may be, but we can say we tried and we're trying to make the public aware of what we're trying to do because we have this balance of Chatham Park and UDO and we have to, we have to move forward with both. And you all are trying to do that with the, the advisory committee, but for the town, this is ours, ours, and we need to move forward with this. And I'm trying real hard to get it wrapped up.
Well, I appreciate Commissioner Fiocco calling it ambitious and Jeff, you also calling it aggressive. Aggressive was what I was going to say, but I'm, I'm very pleased to see it.
Yeah.
Because I, I think there is a great, great need, tremendous priority there and so I'm, I'm very pleased with it. And while, the last schedule you brought me, I said, can we push that back just a little bit? I want to try and hold ourselves to this.
Right, right. Well, and I, and I do too. And if I see opportunities to involve you all or get the schedule on track and keeping it on track, I'll let you know. I see things that might be getting us off, I'll let you know as well because it'll be important to, for us all to realize that the timeline may be extending out to January and February. I'll keep you in the loop.
Very good.
Okay.
Well, I was going to mention this at Commissioner Concerns, but I mean, Jeff's probably going to try to go home after this. The anniversary that I had mentioned earlier has me out of town on Monday, the 15th. I really do not want to miss the discussion.
Okay.
But I'm not going to change that plan for Monday and wondering if we could change it to Wednesday of that week.
Of next week?
Yeah, so if this board could accommodate that and if the planning board could.
We certainly could.
I'd like to ask that.
We could get on email and contact all the planning board next week to, to see if they're okay with the Wednesday meeting. That would be Wednesday, the 17th.
Yeah.
At six o'clock.
Yeah.
Here in this office, or here in this building.
Yeah.
We will see if the planning board can make that.
Right, I appreciate that.
At six o'clock?
Make sure I don't make it.
Six, thanks.
I appreciate that, buddy, making that call.
Jeff, one question on our technical advisory committee. Are we still in touch with everybody that's?
We are. So in this language period, they have not received Module Two to date, but this week they will get that. I wanted to lay out the timeline discussion with you all since we had sort of spun our wheels a little bit. I want to get that board back in action and get them reviewing Module Two. Hopefully the natural resources will come this week as well and get that out to the advisory committee. That's why I'm thinking that advisory committee meeting is probably going to trend towards the last week of August. It's the fifth Monday for us. We have five Mondays, so that's good for staff. We can accommodate another meeting that week, so that's good. And that's where I'm thinking we're probably going to shoot for.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That completes our old business. Under new business, we have Brian Grisbeck discussing the Chatham Park sewer allocation requests.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And what I have before you this evening is a request from, a request from Chatham Park for reservation, sewer allocation for some projects that they will be submitting site plans or that staff has been informed that we could expect some site plans from Chatham Park on. And I want to, I want to give you a little bit of history and show you just briefly how we got to where we're at. And then that should be able to explain what, what staff at this point would recommend doing, and we've had some discussions with Chatham Park on, on this solution. I think we're, I think we're almost there in an agreement on this, but let me, let me give this a go anyway. The third, I think the third item and the item that you see up on the screen there is, is a memo, a planning memo that, I said, planning, Chatham Park had provided staff a memo for when we may, might be able to receive site plans or receive allocation requests for various projects associated with Chatham Park in a couple of different areas. The one area on Thompson Street, which is generally north of Thompson Street and I guess east of Piper Tower Road. And then another area in the general area of Russet Run, which is what we might refer to as a medical office building plat, or complex area. You'll recall there were roughly 10 or 12 lots, I think, that were planted in that area. And what they're contemplating would be three, three, the development of three lots, which would contain essentially restaurant use, restaurant and office uses as future development. So at that point in time, just as a, as a means of trying to give staff in the town an idea for what kind of allocation requests were on the horizon, they submitted, they submitted essentially this amount of allocation, which I believe totals somewhere in the neighborhood of 137,500, 137,550 in total. And that would, that would be from a timeframe starting as soon as, this would be for the dismissal of site plans, not in any way, shape, or form development. But the dismissal of the first site plans coming in in September of 2016. And then, you know, much later on, March of 2017, August of 2017, August of 2018. So 100, essentially 137,550 gallons per day in allocation requests over that timeframe. Now, obviously, we, you'll, you'll recall, I think Mr. Jones had, had indicated earlier tonight that we have in paper flow allocation approximately 75,000 to 100,000, as Fred, Fred sharpens his pencil and reallocates today, we're sitting right now at about 100,000, roughly speaking, in allocation due to, due to dry weather, just simply dry weather not coming through the system. And I believe by way of how paper, the paper flow allocation process works with the county agricultural buildings coming in online, that has the effect of, of increasing the amount of allocation in paper flow that we can, that we can provide. So that amount's up there, but with, if, if we were to be hit by weather again this fall, then obviously that could drop. So I think we're kind of, we're kind of sticking with a worst case scenario of somewhere in the neighborhood of 75,000 right now. The, in, a little bit later on, after some discussion, we, we asked, we asked Chatham Park to kind of fine tune maybe that request to something that would be a little bit, that would, that would be in process a little bit earlier. And they had proposed scaling it down to Thaleys and then Phase One Residential and Phase One B Residential in that General Thompson Street area for a total of 46,350. The issue in discussing, in terms of discussing with staff, if you go back to the previous memo, is that, is that Phase One, in Phase, Phase One A, Thaleys and Phase One A Residential would be coming in September. But if you go back here, Phase One B and Residential, the 75 units that you can see here would actually be coming up, would be coming up much later in March of 2017. So there's a bit of time that we have there to kind of evaluate how much paper flow we actually have available to see if there's, if there's any chance to increase the amount of allocation that could be, be provided and so forth. And so we weren't necessarily looking maybe to encourage that Phase One B, 75 residential units to be part of that allocation. Instead, staff would recommend that, that Chatham Park consider making a request for lots one, two, and three in the Russet Run area because, you know, simply that's on a, that's on a much quicker timeframe. So we get to, we get to the point of actually looking at, at what the staff, where we're sitting as far as the staff recommendation goes. We start looking at, at going back to the Thaleys, the proposed Thaleys school, Phase One A. to the Thales, the proposed Thales school, Phase One A of Thales, which we label here as Building One according to staff conversations with Thales, there's two things that we have to note here. First of all, the original calculation that we received from Chatham Park was with the, with the understanding or with the impression, I guess, that Thales Academy School would have a cafeteria, which the state sets at a slightly larger calculation. In other words, they'd require more allocation than is required. So without having the need for a cafeteria, it reduces the calculation and reduces the requested allocation down somewhat. But also too, the first phase or Building One would be anticipated to accommodate only one hundred students as opposed to the four hundred students. So that's, that's why we, that's why we penciled in this one thousand gallons per day and recommended allocation. Now, you know, obviously if we were to receive something, I think firmer information from the school or firmer information from the developer that we, we should be expecting more development or more build out on that. And that's something that I think you could consider. Then also too, given that the residential units, we'd be looking to receive site plans for those in the very near term. You know, we'd be recommending that full amount. And then likewise for these three lots down here at Russet Run, given that we're, we're informed or advised that we could be receiving site plans for those in very short order, we would recommend, we would recommend reserving that, that capacity under certain conditions as well. That would bring us to a total of thirty-two thousand eight hundred gallons per day, which would take us through the winter and allow us to kind of evaluate where we're at in terms of wet weather flows. We have a pretty good idea, I think, on some other, on some other projects that, that could be coming online as well as have a pretty good idea, I think, on what our, how our allocations are going to change in the near term with the approval of permits for, well, at least having a timeline for the approval of permits, say for instance, for the Sanford Forest Main or for a contemplated Chatham Park wastewater plant as well. And so it just basically gives us a little bit of time to plan around that. It also too, doesn't, it doesn't completely, I guess, take over the seventy-five thousand, the approximate seventy-five thousand gallons per day that we have remaining to allocate as well. So it gives us, it gives us roughly, roughly forty-three thousand gallons to, to work with and, and to plan on for other projects. So I don't know, Fred, if you have, Fred or Jeff, if you have anything else that you want to piggyback on that.
Well, the, the school piece was, we met with the school and they indicated, you know, one elementary school, I think it's a, I think we're on the grade, K to five. And that that was going to, that was going to begin in twenty eighteen and go out several years before the next school was being built. That it had, you know, cut for it, but it wouldn't, the building wouldn't go up. So that might be twenty, twenty or her beyond. So we, we felt like that amount of paper flow just sitting out there during our situation might be a little tough.
And they're just calculating the ten gallons per child.
Without the cafeteria, those ten gallons.
Yeah, fifteen, what, I guess? Fifteen gallons with the cafeteria.
Fifteen, it would, it was originally submitted fifteen with the cafeteria. So, so what we would be doing with this, with this request is, as I, as I mentioned, we have not received site plans for these. We would anticipate receiving site plans within three months in order for this, for this allocation request to, to remain. If we didn't receive without any additional information or if we weren't, you know, privy or provided any additional information from Chatham Park, then, then I would recommend that the allocation be placed back out there in, in the kitty, so to speak, after three months if we were not to receive site plans. If something changed to, if something changed to, I guess, drastically reallocate what we're, what we're discussing here, that would be something that we could consider reviewing with you as well. And, you know, and certainly anything above that would some, would be something that would have to be submitted to staff and to submit it to the board as well for review and, and approval or denial.
Do the representatives of Chatham Park have any input here?
I think Mr. Grisbeck has done a good job of describing the situation as we understand it to be.
So this request is in line with, with your needs and expectations?
Well, absolutely. We will, the way I understand things right now, Thales should be submitting a site plan no later than sometime in the month of September. We'll be following up with the first subdivision plan sometime around that time, maybe a month behind. But the roads in that first subdivision are part of the Thales road system too. So they, you need to be looking at those in concert. So the timing of that should work out pretty well together.
We'll make a motion to approve the request for allocation.
Michael Fiogo has moved the allocation be approved. Subject is submitted. Site Plan has presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by John Bonnet. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carries unanimously. The second is the request from Chatham County for the Town of Pittsburgh liaison to the Chatham County Planning Board.
I, I'll, I'll take that one and I apologize. I thought there was a cover memo on that, but I think the, the letter from the county administrator is pretty self-explanatory. Essentially what the county is requesting is a liaison that the county board consider allowing a liaison from the town planning board to, I guess, be a liaison to the county planning board. So I guess I put that for your review. If that's, I, one, one idea that I had was is if you were, if that was, if that was your will, that, that you make a motion to the effect that the planning board discuss and appoint a liaison and, you know, and we'll make sure that, make sure that they're in attendance at all the meetings as necessary. I think as you can see from the, also from the letter, that the, the purpose of the liaison is to just essentially provide, provide, I think their words, her words were an information conduit to the planning board, the county planning board. And so it's basically to improve communications and flow of information between, between the two bodies.
So, some discussion?
I thought it was a good idea. I think it was a good idea. In fact, I'd like to make the appointment. I recommend Brian Taylor.
Are there further thoughts or suggestions or shall we make a motion to ask Brian to be our representative to the county as liaison? I agree. He's very diligent in what he does.
I want a motion to appoint Brian Taylor.
Moved by Michael Fiogo, seconded by Pamela Balton. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Manager update.
Thank you again. I'll try to be as brief as I, as I possibly can. And certainly if you have any questions, feel free to jump in or jump in for clarification later. The Sanford Forest Main issue, staff has met with, with the city of Sanford back on the twenty-seventh of last month, discussed the agreement with some more detail. I believe the, the town attorney and Sanford city attorney is in the process of discussing the finalization of some of those terms. And I think Sanford is anticipating reviewing it with their board in early September. I would anticipate probably the town doing the same if we have the information available. The, with regard to the actual design, staff's completed, I guess, its meeting with engineering firms and is in the position to recommend one particular firm. And the next step on that would be to submit a contract for your review at the next meeting on the twenty-second. The, also too, depending on what position the, what position Davenport was in and if we had some, I think some good numbers, some additional numbers on the Forest Main in terms of projecting those costs forward, we may also have Davenport at that August twenty-second meeting as well. So that's at this point in time what I'm shooting for. If that changes at all, I will keep you posted. I had met with also with regard to Chatham Park, had met with, with one of Chatham Park's engineers on, on a conceptual or planned wastewater plant that I think the board has been, has been advised about in the recent past. And it would be, the concept at this point in time would be for Chatham Park to design and finance and build a separate wastewater plant. Conceptually, the, the plant would, would have third-party, if, if, if come, if it came together, the plant would have third-party operation with town remaining on top of the building. The, there's a little bit to flesh out, I think, in terms of process and how we want to review that and what kind of information Chatham Park, design information, conceptual information Chatham Park would have available. But I'd like to workshop, workshop that with you guys probably in one of the September meetings before we get too far ahead of the card on that. So, so I guess look for that here in the near future. Robeson Creek Bridge. I don't know. Some of you may remember us talking about that in the past as far back as maybe two thousand and thirteen or two thousand and fourteen. Budget, state budget issues have kind of scattered the start time and timeline for that project around. Not long ago, we were thinking that this, that this bridge was actually going to be built over, it was along the eighty-seven, nine oh two over Robeson Creek. We thought that it was actually going to start sometime in two thousand and eighteen due to budgetary issues. It looks as if they're speeding that process up a little bit and surprise, we could be looking at it in September. So we have, we have a meeting, staff has a meeting scheduled with stakeholders this week at some point in time, schools and county. And I believe the county is, is invited and, and our staff, of course, and police and fire to make sure that we, we gather our ducks in a row. And so, so I guess we'll look forward to that as well. You'll also recall that we do have a water main that crosses that bridge. That, the location of that water main has been already designed. Hydrostructures will, will be helping manage the, the process on that, of course, with, with town's involvement along the way as well.
Brian, what's the timeframe on the construction?
I'm sorry?
What's the timeframe on that bridge construction?
How long it's going to take? I'd have to defer that to Fred.
Eight to twelve months. The whole section is closed.
Yeah.
Closed for eight to twelve months.
Bypass of the original.
Wow.
Sounds like Parks knows a lot of tournaments.
So the stormwater VMP's work continues on, on planning on the stormwater VMP around the traffic circle and also the VMP that's, that would be anticipated for behind, behind Town Hall. We would be looking to go out, to go out for bid on that, I guess, in early December. Goal of hiring a contractor by mid-February of seventeen, construction beginning against early March of seventeen. We're, we're, we're expected to complete the, the grant project by December thirty-first of two thousand and seventeen. So I don't know if you've had a chance to take a look at this, this, a lot of people called it, what's that hole? I think the project was also known as what's that hole in front of Town Hall for quite some time. But believe it or not, that, that I think is functioning quite well. We've had some recent heavy rainfalls and it, I think it's going to be a real benefit to our community. And as we add these, I think it's going to do nothing but improve the quality of water that ultimately goes into our water sheds. So I think Fred and staff have put in a lot of good work on that. It's something that we're not, we don't have a lot of experience with here locally, but I think this first one was a pretty good learning experience for us. So you'll recall at the last meeting, we discussed some, some intersection improvements in conjunction with Transportation Alternatives program to improve ADA compliance in intersections. And we submitted the letter to DOT for, for intersections, Thompson and Hillsborough, Johnson and sixty-four, intersection at Pittsburgh Elementary School and fifteen, five oh one, as well as intersection at eighty-seven and sixty-four. And so we will, we will let you know how that process turns out. We did place importance in the narrative of the letter. And it was just a one-page, page letter, as you remember from your, your discussion last time. We did place importance on the downtown Thompson and Hillsborough intersection because that is part of the vision plan. And I think it's something that the DOT is familiar with. And I think, I think certainly it's going to have the most impact in the, in the highest, one of the highest traffic areas in terms of pedestrian travel and vehicular travel too. So if there's ever a project that was set up for, it's, it's probably that one, that area. Downtown kiosks, that was another, it's been another discussion in previous meetings and it came up again last week. I think Christopher Bonnet did, did ask that I follow up a little bit with Parks Planner, Mr. Paul Horn on that. And Paul is tracking down some, some estimates on, on some, on three or four kiosks that would be located in downtown that would kind of sort of be similar to what we've seen on Franklin Street in downtown Chapel Hill. He's going to think about the direction or he's going to, excuse me, he's going to think about location a little bit on that. I think there's a little bit of thought that needs to, to go into where exactly these, these are going to be located. And there probably needs to be more dialogue with downtown business owners and what, how we can maximize that, maximize, I guess, the ability for these sites to be seen and put in such a way that they don't, you know, they don't, with space being limited downtown, we want to make sure we're, we're putting them in the right spot. So. And then finally, a couple other Town Hall improvements. You'll see that we did, we did at least put some, put some resurface down on the front parking lot and the driveway around the building. We'll be doing the rear parking lot. We have to, we have to work with police to make sure that we can coordinate a time when the company can come and we can have our, our, our vehicles moved out of the way. The lot was also striped. It's not a complete repair job. There's, there wasn't an intention at this point in time or willingness on my part in the budget until we know for sure what we're doing with this building to completely rehab the parking lot area. So I think this is a treatment that gets us through the next three to five years or so without the parking lot further degrading. And we had to put stripe, striping down anyway. So this is probably as good a time as any to tackle. So then the only other thing, I guess, I'd mention off script is that we're looking to, we're looking to do some restriping of streets in a couple of different areas of town. And we will make sure that folks are aware of that going on if there should be any traffic issues or delays or anything of that nature. And probably a couple other things I could mention, but I will tap out right at the moment. And if there are any concerns or questions, feel free to let me know.
Is that restriping parking places or, or, okay.
I'm sorry, streets.
Streets.
Yeah.
All right. Questions for Brian Grisbeck? Questions for Brian Brusbeck?
I think the ABC Board is looking to do the same with their parking lot, so I asked them to give you a ring.
Sure.
Contractor, they've been struggling to find a good contractor.
So next word, Commissioner's concerns. Jay Farrell?
How heavy is this?
Express line?
Pamela Baldwin? John?
How is it?
Excellent. I therefore entertain a motion to.
No, I was just saying you guys were handling the table.
To go into executive session?
I'd like to make a motion that Mr. Perswitz to NCGS 43-318, 1185, to discuss the first real estate.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Second, who about Jay Farrell? Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed. Motion carries unanimously.